It's Tuesday evening, October eighteenth, city council meeting. We do all the order. Yeah, call order.
Jim Richards.
Ryan Nykors.
Dana Bergner.
Jim Phillips.
We have agenda in front of us. There's a couple of quick things, editorial comments I'd like to add. Under Parks and Trails. Is action item approval. Parks and Trails, which is H. The letter was in our packet, but it didn't, I don't think it was on our agenda, so. Item six under Parks and Trails is approval of an H-friendly membership letter.
Mike, hold on, Sunny set her mic if it working, can you pull up the chat? Oh, so. On her video, or does she want it all? Ask just certain. He might not have a mic on her computer. I don't know. Sunny, can you hear us? Maybe she's working on it. That hurt. Whatever.
Well, finish and join us, continue to watch that, so. So, yes, under number six, Parks and Trails approval of H-friendly membership letter. And then under new business, point number three, this is an FYI, but I just want to mention it, it's outstanding citizen nominations. By November tenth. Add to new business, IX, point number three. FYI, outstanding citizen nominations by November tenth. No other changes, I make a motion that we approve agenda with two amended items.
Second.
In the comments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Approval of the minutes. Think we need a motion for that, so.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for all the city council meetings that we had up this time for. Eight, three, eight sixteen, eight thirty, nine, seven, nine fourteen, nine twenty.
Your second?
My second.
Yeah. Lot of meetings since August third. Any other comments? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That's approved. Next item is public forum. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. With no employees' names, maybe you. Please generally expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out a form that's on the podium. The speaker will be recognized only once. So with that, anybody that would like to speak in public forum, please come forward. Second call for public forum. And third and final call for public forum. Saying none, we'll close the public forum at six thirty-six. Parked in chambers, I don't think this is not in our chambers, so. We'll continue on to our fire department. FYI, sir. Dan?
Yep.
You wanna?
I'm here.
Take us through your.
We have some. More noteworthy things to talk about, so even though I gave you notes and everything, it's, I think, better to come directly. So just kind of quickly just mentioned the runs, because that, if you look at it, it's actually quite a busy month. Other than some people burning quesadilla, lighting on smoke alarms. We had multiple fuselage calls. You can see there that Rochester had a large barn fire, so they asked us to cover their north station for a couple hours, and Stewartville had their south station. And then on island, had, you know, multiple fire, Rajan, nowhere, light up. And you shed, just north of us, light up, and then it happened in a house, north of us, light up, so. Somewhat interesting, they have that many things light up, but. They called us for support, mainly for water, so that's always good to help, because if we ever needed them, we want them to come, so. Odd wants to see that many fuselage calls, glad to help. Okay, for action items, I got a, got a few here. So the first one is, I, every year I write for a grant from a company called Copier. You might have known them as Eggstar, so I think they have a building all the way in the airport, so they do a grant. For emergency services, so fire first responders. Every year I write for it. Something, I know I've got it in the past for some month. I just keep on writing each year, and this year I was lucky enough to get it, so they gave me, I asked for two thousand dollars. Because the pagers that we carry, about a thousand apiece, and we don't have any spares, so I thought, well, it's just right for two. And so they gave me two thousand bucks, I filled out the paperwork, the check should be coming. So what I need permission from you is to order the two pagers. You can see it's just ten over two thousand, which is good. Kind of eats all the grant money, and we should get the check before the actual bill or the pagers come, so we shouldn't cut us, wouldn't cost us any money, because we're going to check. So I'm looking for approval to order the two pagers.
Just before we do the motion, it seems like this should need a resolution.
So maybe once you get the check. Then have the resolution to accept the check, because I don't have the check right now, but I've submitted the request to get the check.
That's okay with you, I think that'd be better.
Yeah, what I requested is the ability to order the pagers, and then, once I get the check, then you guys can do the resolution to accept it.
Audit your files, resume. So we'll just table that until you.
Table the resolution, yes.
So we need.
Prove it out of a table.
Prove the order to get the two pagers, you know, coming. Knowing that the money is, should be here any day.
So I make a motion that we approve Dan to order the pagers.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. That's a finger.
Next, next one, we, on our tanker, we'd like to, we were doing some training somewhere, and we thought. We could be a little more efficient if we had heart suction on the tanker with the. End that's already kind of connected to it, so that all we have to do is when the engine shows up from the tanker, we just take off the thing, book it up, it's already got a screener, and kind of help us. Kind of speed the process, so we got a quote for fire safety for essentially a length of heart suction that would go on the tanker, screener, and little. Section of hose that we could use to plug into the drop tank, which kind of would help from a recirculation standpoint. So we think that this would be, you know, something to make us a little more efficient, you know, on these fire calls, like. I guess I'd like permission, since we're five hundred bucks, to get the heart suction and hose for sixteen oh five.
Motion we approve the. Twenty-five foot holes and related components from fire safety.
Second.
Records. Any comments? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
So the next one is, so when we bought our engine in twenty fifteen, we didn't have any space at the hall, so we took our little mini pumper. And we moved it down to the city shop, and the city had said, let's keep it, because you never know with the whole lake-shady development, maybe we need a mini pumper with four-wheel drive and a pump to actually go out there and. Maybe be able to use that, and, or for grass fires, if I'm perfectly, well, how many years later, never really had any need to use it. And it's been sitting there, and city staff have been tired of having it around, we thought maybe they'd use it, but it really, you know, it's, it's an old vehicle. So we got, you guys give us permission, we sold it on the auction, got about ninety-five hundred bucks, you know, for that, so that's great, I don't, we just didn't use it a lot. But we've always kind of felt like, you know, having that there, if we had, you know, something where we wanted to get water someplace that is off roads. We have the six-wheeler, but it has like fifty gallons of water, which really won't go that far, plus you'd have to drive it there, it's not really a vehicle. So we had decided, we had said that we would like to get a skid pack, so a skid pack is, it slides in the back of our pickup that we have. It has three hundred gallons of water, it's got two reels on it, and it also allows, would allow us to, you know, get to a scene, you know, that's a little more rural, because the pickups are right. It has more water than the six-wheeler, it has two things, so we could be, you know, spraying on both sides, or two off the one side. It also has pump and roll capability, whereas the old mini pumper, you have to stop, engage the pump, you could spur it, spur it, but then you'd have to stop, gate is a gate to pump and drive, so it just really isn't that conducive. And if you look at most departments, they have some form of brush truck, pickup truck, so we don't think a whole brush truck designated would be useful. But we think a skid pack in our pickup, which right now is just a pickup, would be nice. And so we got a quote for a nice one, we went down to fire safety and looked at one, then another department bought, had, kind of got to see it, and said, okay, we don't need that, and maybe we go with. Smaller hoses to get longer distances, we did kind of compare, and so you see the quote there, that's, you know, with the pump and some, you know, estimated installation, you know, we're thinking, this thing is. Huge, we don't really want to mess with that thing sliding out, so we're going to pay for them, so I don't think it'll be the full amount, but. That was the quote, you know, for twenty-one thousand two hundred, so the mini pumper, that funds that we got, I'd like to see go to that, because it really is kind of a similar function. And then our gambling funds are, you know, the money that we've been donating, you know, from the gambling, we'd like to use that to pay for the rest, you know, our body. The officers on the department field, that's a good use, you know, for, you know, our gambling equipment funds. So that's what I'd like to request for that. Let's say over, you know, ten, eleven thousand, over gambling.
So it's going to pretty much take care of everything for the twenty-one thousand two hundred then?
Yeah, so if I, if I take ninety-five hundred that I already got for the truck, like I said, take another, you know, ten, eleven thousand, that will pay off that. That bill.
This is a curiosity, what's the Scotty foam system?
So the foam systems in general help water be more effective, and it's like a suffocate, I think that's the right word, to really help. You know, help us do water, so most of these have anywhere from a five to ten gallon, and even our six wheeler has a little foam gallon ton. And it has a very low concentration that goes with the water, and we have it on all our pumpers too. So you, you energize foam, and the foam helps smother and makes the water work better, so we have the water cooling, and then we have the foam kind of isolated. Yeah, so we didn't have that on the old mini pumper, that was just, and that, that mini pumper was so old, it was kind of on the old days when you had high pressure, you'd blast fire. And now everybody's realized you don't blast fire, you soak it, so all of our engines are kind of low pressure, maybe a hundred, you know, a hundred and fifty pounds PSI. They have little rings on the nozzles that help create lots of water droplets, so that that goes and helps, you know, cool the fire. And then you add foam to really help get, you know, suffocated, yeah, so this, I should have mentioned that, yeah, so this skid pack. Not only does it have, you know, three hundred gallons of water, it has a foam tank that we can use to do both.
I make a motion to spend up to twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars for a skid unit.
Wait a second.
All right, any other questions for? Dan? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. We're through.
And then the last one, we had a lady on our first responders who's been doing great, she's been labeling stuff, she's been organizing things. She got kind of the point where it's a mess, and if you, I said to the pitcher, what it looks like today, you know, we have, we're tight in that fire hall. And there could be definitely areas of opportunity, you know, to organize, so she, you know, checked around, people, she was a creative concept, you know, this is a, this base concept is a local business in Rochester. They highly recommended, they have very high-quality products, so this is something that, that we think is not cheap material, this is something that we can have for, for some time. I don't envision us expanding the fire hall anyway, and so I think there's just need, we have to have ways to optimize it. But when you look on that east side of the fire hall, it's cabinets, it's a little table, it, there's really no way to, you know, auction bottles are supposed to be stored up and down, we really don't have a good way to do that, so we'd have. You know, a way to kind of slide them in this drawer, and we can just have some cheap cabinets that are, you know, today, we don't have any racking or shelving, and so this company can also offer that. To actually help allow us to get maybe some tubs on the stuff that we don't use very often, because we have a mannequin right now that. It was, we were tripping over it, so we threw it on top of our radio room, but now we ever want to use it, now you're trying to drag a mannequin back down, which is nice to keep it, whatever other things. So we think that, while, while it's, you know, a high-quality product, that we think that this will allow us to take that side and make a huge dent on organization, and it's for both first responders and the fire department. We have kind of a combination of crap and storage and supplies over there. You know, various camps, you could always, I'm glad to show you guys, everyone to see, you know, some of the things that we store over there. So we looked at budgets, saw that since this has benefited both organizations, we could even leverage, you know, see, ELC has got budget that they haven't been used. We could definitely, you know, come up with the money by, I think, dipping into a few different departments of budgets, because it really is benefiting. But again, we'd like to start with the east side, kind of where we think it's the most ugly, you know, while seduction shoveling around, and I think we could make that a lot more usable. And like I said, this is high-quality stuff, so if we ever, you know, wanted to move it, we can move it around, you know, the area. But we're asking, so I'd like to, they said that they might need some, device of lumber to actually secure to the back of our wall, that's why I just rounded up, I don't think it'll be that high. But since they, they don't know until they actually get here, they said, you know, they have a big couple hundred bucks just for some. Who's lumber, so I don't think it'll be the seventy-five, but I'd like to request, you know, seventy-five for the picture that you saw coming out of, at least two departments.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the space concepts for storage and shelves. Now, second.
Up to seventy-five hundred?
Up to seventy-five hundred, yes. Thank you. Hold on a second, you hear the comments? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Would be a nice improvement.
Yeah, I love to.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, Dan.
The other bills are just FYIs. That's a probably the thing. There's no motion for those. First responders? Can you speak to that or not? Just FYIs, okay. So those are all purchases.
Mr. Bear, I'm sorry, Mr. Bear, there is one. Two B under first responders is over, well, you got a couple that are over the five hundred, I guess, yeah. My understanding is that anything over five hundred had to be approved by council. Did I make that up? Sorry.
So the, the first one is for AD pads.
Sunny, could you mute me again? We can hear background. Thank you.
Yes, so I do try to ask when I can, if I know that the amount is over five hundred, to get for stuff. So the first one was, we ordered ADs last year, three new ones. We had a couple of medical calls where we actually used pads, and then, you know, the supply chain in the world, it was hard to get pads, and so I said. Get three more pads come, because we already were down two, and we were worried, so the free pads, fifty-five bucks over the five hundred dollars. So I guess you could, you know, I can follow my sword and say, I'm sorry, but I wanted to get two of the replacement, to get our units back in, then we'll have one extra, and then as soon as we use one, we'll try and do. One piece's order, so that's the first one. The second one is training, you know, this is where we did CPR training for both the firefighter, you know, and the first responder, so I typically don't ask for. Training, because trains typically are a lot of times over five hundred dollars. But yeah, that was AD training, CPR training, and this was done by Catherine Ellingson, who's on our first responder, so it's a better deal than if we would have contracted the Elgin ambulance or the Red Cross or whatever. So that's those two bills. And then you can see, you know, Tanya, I tried to tell her to, you know, not spend over five hundred dollars, and so, you know, individually, she didn't.
And Dan, there's six D under the fire department for the Riverland Community College, that was also over five hundred.
Yep, and again, we're back to training, that's a training, and then, I'm not sure really if you remember it, but since that is MP, MBFTE reimbursable. The new fiscal budget, so the Minnesota Firefighter Board of Train Education every year gives us money per firefighter for reimbursement. And their fiscal year runs July through June, so in July their budget reset, and I actually got three hundred dollars per firefighter, so I have a little over six thousand dollars reimbursement. So that one, and anything you get now, just send them all in, and you get hundred percent reimbursement. So that one, we'll get, we'll get the thousand bucks back. But that's training, just like the AD CPR training.
So we don't need a motion for that one, that's just reimbursable.
Yep.
In and out.
That will be in and out.
And we do need a motion for the three first responder bills.
I make a motion that we. We approve the two A, B, and C. Under the first responders bills.
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Continue to keep that in mind going forward, so, of the five hundred limit, so. Thank you, no other comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Through. Next section is water and sewer. We have the minutes. October eleventh meeting in your packets. Joe, would you like to make just a comment about the contract funding updates?
Um, yeah, a lot of work going on at Waste Water Treatment Plant. I don't know if you got the, the memo was in the package, or the pictures, was that the package? Didn't get, okay. What we talked. There is a memo, it goes to PCA every month, I hoped it would be in the. Packet, but. Lots of work going on at the treatment plant, basically at this point, all the buildings are up on the ground. All the precast buildings are built. Walls in, windows in, doors going in, roofs on. Some of the interior painting's done, and. You know, really starting to take shape, the admin building is coming up out of the ground. Plumbing, the electrical, the foundations are in, and the framing is going on, so it's coming up out of the ground now. Some vaults going in around the SPR, some of that type of stuff, but facility's really taking shape, continues to advance pretty quickly, so. Again, invite anybody that wants to come out, take a look. Let me know, or Jeff, Art, no, and more. Maybe then, but things are taking shape there pretty quickly. Which is pretty much what the contractors, you know, projected, we wanted to get things closed down, so they could continue work through the summer or the winter, and, and that's shaping up. Any questions on the treatment facility that anybody has, like I said, there is a memo, I have wanted there to be, get in the. In the, in the package, but I can pass it around or email it out or whatever.
Email it, or that would be perfect.
Next, I'm, Joe, you can respond, this is the letter from Staub about the.
Whoops. Yeah. So, on the two big digester tanks out there. Staub had bid the project with. A supplier that subsequently went out of business, and so. They went through and looked at alternate suppliers, there was several pre-approved suppliers, and they actually found another supplier. That they ultimately proposed. Supply this dome, we looked at the. Supposing it meets the specification, the quality product, we would allow that. The issue really is that it costs, you know, about sixteen, almost seventeen thousand dollars more for them, and it's really, you know, not their fault that the. Company went out of business, but on the other side of it, it's not the city's fault either. They have the contract. In my opinion, I don't know that you're obligated to do anything in terms of covering this additional cost, in my opinion, it's, it's. Contractually likely Staub's cost to eat. On the other side, you know, there, there's another way to look at this in terms of treating people, how you'd want to be treated, and is it fair that they should. Basically eat all of that cost, or pay for all of that cost. And so, you know, I think you can make an argument on both sides of it. Sewer and Water Committee did look at it, I think the Sewer and Water Committee voted to split the cost with Staub, you know, so that eighty-five hundred dollars, or, you know, whatever half of that. That number equates to, and so. We didn't include it on the current pay request, because we didn't know which direction that the council would want to go, and how you view this issue. But they didn't, I asked them to, you know, put it in writing and, and ask them. To present that to the city. When, when you guys would look at it and provide some direction, and if you want to. Participate in part of that cost, then in a subsequent change order, we'll, we'll add that, and if you don't, then I will tell them that.
So, and the Water and Service Minister will see that motion for recommendation to split the cost, and a little more, some of our rationale coming out of our committee was that we thought it was, at this point in the program. It was meant to be a good faith effort. As Joe said, the late company went out of business, we have no obligation, but at the same time, we thought. The good faith effort from city and also from Staub themselves also would be something that hopefully they would agree to, if that's what our council would consider doing. The. Eighty-five hundred dollars, where the number is. And that would come out of our contingent fund.
The two, we got that, we've got a contingency for the whole project.
How are we looking plus and minus on that without getting into the contingency, because I know we had saved some, but.
Yeah, no, I think we're, we're, we're in good shape.
That's still before getting into the contingency, because I know we had saved some money on some of this stuff that we had done for the walls and.
Yeah.
And then we paid some more for the flooring, how was, and again, for those, stainless steel for that.
So right now, we're at a net deduct on the change order that we'll present tonight. So we're below contract amount, there'll be subsequent change orders, potentially including this, that, that'll get us above that. But, you know, we have that two and a half percent contingency for the whole project, you know, which, which amounts to nine, nine hundred and some thousand dollars. So we're, we're well within budget, we're, we're tracking good for that, so I, I don't think that that.
No, I, I think that that makes sense to split the cost that there is for good trade, I think that that's a good recommendation.
A good faith effort, we think, because we're so early, well, we're halfway through the project essentially. There may be other issues that come up down the road, but we think this would be.
And again, they couldn't, you know, foresee this one, you know, well, this could have been on.
And they have, honestly, they've been a good partner. They're, they're doing good work, they're reasonable to work with, they're trying hard. Which, you know.
I agree, it looks fantastic out there, so they're doing a great job.
I make a motion that we proceed with splitting the cost, stop construction for the. Sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars for the dome roofs. Any other comments? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All same sign. Back end is a change order number one, contract one, resolution 2022 dash 25. Resolution to approve wastewater treatment plan, contract one, change order number one. Details in our packet identifying those change orders resulting in a forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ten dollars debt deduction from the original contract. I make a motion, we approve resolution number 2022 dash 25. Sorry.
Sunny says we have to adopt those.
Oh, I just. So it says, it should say resolution to adopt.
You adopt the resolution to approve.
Got it, thank you. So you said it's. Okay.
Mayor Ikurst. Mayor Ikurst, are you calling for the vote? You've made the motion, second, I'm doing the roll call.
Yes, I will.
No, she's doing it, so she says.
Counselor Phillips. Counselor Bergner. Counselor Richards. Counselor Carlson's absent, thank you.
Next item is our. The contract two and three. Back resolution 2022 dash 26 to approve. Wastewater Treatment Plan Contract two dash three change order number one, that was with the Fitzgerald Company. And find items insufficient for consideration. No change in compensation, okay.
This is largely a housekeeping change order to address some labor standards requirements. Associated Funding Agency, so no pro cost, just.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution, resolution to approve the wastewater treatment facility contract two and three, change order number one.
All by voice vote.
Roll call, Mayor Ikurst.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Phillips. Counselor Bergner. Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Carlson's absent, thank you.
Next item is a. The generator that we purchased from the G N R. Three years ago. Kane, do you want to come to the podium, please? So he gets a quick background on what we're dealing with here with this quote.
Generator is not running right now, we had John Deere, RDO, Rochester come out. They gave us a diagnosis and some slight repairs. That first bill was for nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. Since then, they come up with a plan to repair the fuel pumps. RDO is asking for eleven ninety-five to remove it and reinstall it after. Rochester Fuel Injection rebuilds the pump or we choose to purchase a new pump. So what I'm requesting the council for tonight is RDO's estimate of eleven ninety-five, forty-three. And also you have Rochester Fuel Injection rebuild the pump for a price of twelve, fourteen hundred dollars.
So have you paid the nine twenty-one for the troubleshooting?
Correct.
You have to, okay, that's why I remember. So the other quote. Twelve hundred dollars, is that in our packet? See there.
It's actually eleven ninety-five.
Is it what you had said, twelve hundred to fourteen hundred to rebuild pump?
Nope, that's, that's, there's two separate items here, so the RDO equipment is estimate number zero zero five nine two seven.
That's for eleven ninety-five.
One more change.
Kane, I don't think that, what was the Rochester? Not RDO, but the other one, twelve to fourteen hundred, I don't think that's in the packet.
Yep, yep, it is, it's included with my email. That was just a conversation I had with Rochester Fuel Injection over the calls. So that's, there's.
Thank you.
But that was already paid.
So I guess what I'd be asking for is RDO eleven ninety-five, forty-three and Rochester Fuel Injection, twelve to fourteen hundred. There's, there's two separate requests here.
Well, essentially, the eleven ninety-five is the RDO removing the pump and reinstalling the pump, the labor.
Correct. And there is a, we, we can decide if we would like to, we could haul our generator to the shop and that would save. A service trip charge, but. Correct, yes, two trips.
So three seventy.
Correct. But, you know, we do have time involved with. Delivering it, picking it up, so there is not a complete wash. Or a complete savings, I should say, but that, that is an option for us, we can do that, that saves a little bit of money.
Do you have another second? Quote on this or just one?
You know, I, I don't, it's a John Deere engine, it's a John Deere fuel pump. I can't ask. Caterpillar or Case or any of these other companies, it's very specific to John Deere.
And they also have the diagnostic tools to work with the John Deere engine, that other.
Correct, correct, yep.
Do I make a motion that we approve the RDO estimate? Up to eleven hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-three cents to remove and replace. We decide you want to. Take it over, take the three seventy off that eleven ninety-five up to number.
Right.
And what about this other one, estimate number zero zero five nine two seven on, is that an addition to that for a total? Page one, page two, okay.
Nine twenty-seven is, takes up that motion.
No, we would also need to do the twelve hundred to fourteen hundred to rebuild.
Yes, from Rochester Fuel Injection, yes.
So whether a second for my motion, I'll second your measures. Okay, so just to be clear, this first motion is just to do the remove and replace, not the rebuilding, that'd be a second motion.
Okay.
It's a different company. Any other comments? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All same sign. Okay, that's approved. Now we have a, so we want to make a motion to. Go to. Rochester Fuel Injection. I make a motion, we approve. Rebuilding the injection pump on the generator engine. Up to fourteen hundred dollars.
Second, before discussion and just ask that in the future, we get an estimate that's. A professional estimate and not just an email, both discussion.
First of news, person.
First of the conversation, it's just trickier to understand and to even, I didn't, I mean, I missed that completely. So.
Any other comment? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anytime I, how long, how long it might take.
I'll call tomorrow.
Okay. I hope it's soon, we could use it anytime. Okay. Last item was an update on regular notice, I think Joe, number twelve, it's available to the public, should have copies outside City Hall door and email this that you sent it out to me.
Twelve and thirteen.
Okay.
Number thirteen went out last Friday.
Right, no experience, no public rules. Planning on zoning. After the minutes from the September eighth. And the October thirteenth, which is in your packets. Both of your packets, but. So this is regarding the. The reason, the seven, ten, Minnesota Avenue South. Prosper lot split variance rezone. Two, two and R two, I think it is, yes. And a variance of a. Of the R two, because it's less than 20,000 square feet. So in your package, you want to just go to the. Resolution and. Twenty. Twenty twenty-two, that's twenty-seven A and D, so. Process and all this, comment on briefly, Jim, or Jim, want to comment on it too? The resolutions are, well, we'll just go ahead and discuss.
Sure.
Or whoever, like, lead the discussion.
Phil is there as well. I would just point out, Philip Carlson is there as well.
Right, he is down from the Stan Tech Planning Office in Minneapolis, so, thank you, Jim, if you want to. Initiate the discussion, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor request in front of you is twofold, it is for the property at seven ten Minnesota Avenue. They're requesting that a portion of that property be rezoned from its current B two highway commercial to R two multifamily. As you may know, there is a, an old, a single family home on that portion of the property, the rest of the two some acres. Is, has several commercial buildings and there's businesses operated out of it. They want to convert that home to a duplex and, but being in the B two zone. It needs to be in the, in the proper zoning district because the B two district does not allow residential. So, and then to, to separate that lot from the original parcel. So that it would be zone residential and the rest commercial, then needs a variance because. The lot that they're proposing to split off is less than the 20,000 square foot minimum in the code. So there are multiple steps here, and if I might, for ease of discussion. You have resolutions in your packet for approval or denial of the rezoning. And we've also packaged that with the Land Use Plan Amendment, the Land Use Plan and the zoning should go together. So if you approve one, we should have those in, in line. And then the second pair of resolutions are for approval or denial of a lot split and variance to the lot size. I would suggest that the council take up the question of the Land Use Plan Amendment and rezoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of that. And if the council agrees with that recommendation, then in essence, the other two actions might go away. Because there wouldn't be the appropriate zoning to have a lot split with a new. Duplex on it. So the, the council could take that action. So my recommendation to you is that you adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven B. That is the resolution denying this rezoning. And if that passes, then we could see about the others. A, a course of action here is that if the council does deny that rezoning, then the applicants might simply withdraw their request for the lot split. And variance because there simply wouldn't be a case to be made for a separate lot that can't hold the use that they want to put it to. And I would hasten to add, and probably the attorney would remind us that the applicants have reasonable use of the property now. They could put it to commercial uses and there's many of them allowed in B two. So denying this rezoning for the residential, which is not the current zoning. And I might add, is not in line with the pattern of a commercial corridor that has been established in long discussions with the planning. That this is simply not in, in line with the, with the land use pattern that the city has, has adopted here. So that would, that would be my recommendation to you is to take that Land Use Plan and rezoning resolution first.
So I'd like to just have a discussion, I was able to talk with one of the authors of the future land use plan today. This is a twenty-year-old land use plan and her and I had a long discussion about how this is a vision, but it doesn't necessarily, it's not, you know, written in stone. And I don't know if any of you have actually read the comprehensive plan, not just the map, but the actual wording in our, in the plan. It's very, very good, they did such a great job. So much of it really highlights the need. For affordable housing and the twenty years ago, the lack of affordable housing and that. Twenty years later, we all know that that's a huge issue right now, right? This is, then it says, because of the high cost of land and building, you know, everything possible must be done to maintain and restore existing supply of affordable. You know, everything possible must be done to maintain and restore existing supply of affordable housing. And that we should all work together to recognize the extent of the problems caused by the shortage of affordable housing. Um, there's housing goals, strengthen the existing housing stock to support and enhance livability. Um, and our housing policies promote the preservation and rehabilitation of the existing housing supply. So these are just some small examples of how the comprehensive plan, while it does. You know, while the map does have that as a B two. There's an existing home on the property. It's not a business, it's a home, not just one home, there's actually two homes in that same little spot. Then there's another home next door, that's an actual, like a threeplex, and then there's another home, there's no actual businesses past. The properties to the, right to the south of that, um, to the Hawks properties that they, so there's no businesses. Until after the bridge. And so when I talked to the person that largely authored this, they said that you can't just look at what we thought would. Happen twenty years ago, you have to look at what the town needs right now and what would be best for our citizens right now. And when I look at that, I think, well, what would be best for our citizens right now? Or potential citizens right now, would that be a business, a building or a business that nobody's proposing and nobody wants? Or would it be to be able to house two separate families, which we all know is a need in this community as well as everywhere else? So that's why my vote would be to, or I would propose that we adopt. This, or that we rezone this into an R two. Um, and I know that you're worried about spot zoning, things like that, but I just don't think that's. When we have, it's all homes. There's not a single business in that stretch. Along that side of the road. So that's, that would be my. Suggestion for this community, and I think it would be the right thing to do for our citizens is to provide them with affordable housing.
I can understand your point, I think that's, you know, affordable housing's done, at the same time, I think it's appropriate that. You know, I don't know if it really affects. The rezoning, but it's more an issue of how it went about getting requested. And that, um, it's been abandoned for forty years. And nobody's done anything with it for this length of time until now. So I think there's some. Concern with the way the whole process, I mean, ultimately, and we'll find out here shortly, but I think the idea that it went. I wanna say it was, it was very, it was done very inappropriately. Um, uh, it was built and with, working with city staff and our building inspector. There were things that really didn't follow the plan that was requested or asked of by the city. I don't wanna say it's, it's, it's set a bad standard or bad precedent, I guess, uh, for what people will do to. Take a house. Essentially rebuild it without the proper permits before issuing and starting, and I think that's something that we. Um, as a city, we have ordinances in place that allow that really not to, um. Take place, especially with the rezoning for something that's been empty for forty years and because it's been empty for a song, it's kind of lost its. Place status four one and, and maybe Mike can speak to that status and, but, uh. I recognize that it is a, it could be a viable house for us and, uh, for the city and the residents. But I'm concerned about the. The precedent that it's, it's setting and the way it was. Come to this point, I guess, so.
And I can appreciate that, and I think, you know, I think if given a chance, the, the owners would, you know, say that that was a mistake and. Um, and there's nothing we can do, we can't go back in time. Um. I don't know about precedent because I don't know how many. How many more places in town do we have like this, or we have old farm studs that have been split up? And I mean, and it's not like we're, it's not like they're asking to build a new place, it's not like they're asking to, you know. Create something out of nothing, this was there. Um, and I, I don't wanna set a precedent saying we don't want development in this community. Um, because what it could do. And I don't know if this is the case and this, if this is, I'm speaking, I'm just thinking outside of my head right now, but. Things have been really slow to get done in this, in this town for people who have tried to come in to build or to have businesses, it's been incredibly slow. We've had a lot of frustrated people pull out, you know, and, and I can see where things might, people might wanna take things in their own, not that they should. But it, and that's nobody's fault, it's staff changing and, you know, it's P and Z committee changing, everything's been changing, um. I don't know if we've done the best job by our citizens that way as a city. Um.
Well, it's.
And I just don't wanna, I, I, I don't know, I guess, I totally understand what you're saying, yes, we should, absolutely, everybody should follow the ordinances and, and. Do things correctly, that is true, and I don't think that there should be. Um.
But here's a problem I, the problem I have with it, so there's, there's a, a few things. Um, and I, I understand what the Hawkins are wanting to do. Um. Jim and I had a chance to, to go over last night and they walked us through and, and I, I can appreciate it. The other side of me tells me that this is not the end for that. I don't want people to think that no matter what decision is made here, that it's the end. But I, I agree with Ryland. From the fact that we've had others come to planning and zoning and, and this is spot zoning. I mean, in reality, it is spot zoning and we've turned them down. And we said that we won't spot zone because that will set a precedence. And for that reason. I, I don't feel comfortable setting a precedence, I don't think this is going to stop people from coming in and, I mean. Things, and I think things have been slow, um, there, there's times things definitely have been slow and backed out, but I also believe that. We're working on a huge water and sewer project and people are going to wanna come into our city. And for that reason, I think we have to set. We have to set these standards, we have to tie to those standards and abide by them. Because we are going to have businesses come in and look at, at their, their neighbors and. Um, you know, it could be a business, it, it could be a house and, and we're, I think we're gonna be judged on how we adhere to our codes. You know, if, if we allow some and not others, or, you know, I think we, we have to be careful. And again, I appreciate what they've done, you know.
Give me an example of another's, another thing that you've denied that has been like this, where it's been a house, an existing house. So not a, I'm not, you know, and it's been a farm and it's been here forever and there's actually two homes on the same, similar.
I don't think it was a farm though.
Um, yeah, I believe it was a, uh, farms.
Well, it's not now, right?
It has been since nineteen seventy-one, so it's, they can't look at that, you know, at, at that point.
But it's, that's why it was so large, right, this is a, you know, we kind of developed our town around it, which is common in small towns like this. And so that house has been there and can you just give me another example of a zoning where you've denied somebody?
Yeah, so Markeen wanted to put in homes up on, on Ninth Avenue and First Street. And that was called spot zoning and he was denied for that reason.
But it, there wasn't an actual home, I, there's an actual.
There's an actual home there, he wanted to add to it and put additional.
Right.
And he got denied.
But this is an existing house.
That was too, it still is, it's still there.
And it was denied, so there's an empty house not being used.
There's, there's someone that lives in that house.
House and it's a.
So then it is a house and somebody is living there.
He wanna do a lot split.
Yeah, he wanna do a lot split and put up, what were they called, patio rooms, I think.
Okay, but do you see what I'm saying, we're like, so the house is being used? So right now what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna say, there is a house that is livable. That could be livable, and we're gonna say no to, to our community members and to potential community members.
I, I, I think that.
That's what I'm struggling with, that's a hard, hard thing for me to understand.
There are so many other issues that are involved with that, just not looking at a structure. Okay, one of them has to do with what you have for, for the sewer issues that go along with it.
That's this email here and they'll be.
That, no, that's, that's only a part, you also have to take a look and see where you would turn around and put the tank. And that's a three thousand gallon tank that has to go in the ground, that's not what we're looking at right now, what we're looking at is, is talking about a variance. Of what there's gonna be and, and whether we're gonna issue a difference of the zoning and, 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 uh. I believe that where we're going with this city is to go with what we had for a plan with that. And not to do spot zoning, I agree a hundred percent with what, what was going on. And planning and zoning did this unanimous that went along with it, it wasn't a question, it was.
The video.
It was unanimous that we were not gonna do that.
What I find though is that planning and zoning's job for me, from what I understand, is that you're defined to facts, then you're present the facts and you. You knew would present your recommendations based on fact. What my job is, and what I believe our jobs are as council people, is to dig in further and to ask questions and do the hard work. And, you know, talk to the people that created this, which I did today. Um, and they wholeheartedly believe that, no, a home should be a home. Depend, and, and like that, and it has, and there is no other business, that's what I don't understand.
They're on a business property, that's why it's B two, there's businesses there, there's also.
Whole, the, so that whole, the.
If you look at everything going up to that point is all businesses, okay?
But then after that, this is also B two, there's all homes here, are we asked, I don't get that. So if a person had, all those people who have homes along that road. What, what are we exactly asking them to do?
Asking them to do anything, so.
Cause they're grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in, but when they sell.
Not a grandfather.
So if they sell to somebody, the new owners will, will likely face the same situation. Looking at the zoning, you know, and, and it is nothing, nothing against the Hawkins, cause. We wanna see businesses, we wanna see people here. But we wanna do things the right way and adhere to the codes that we put in place. They, it's, it's not like they bought a home to live in, they bought a home to divide it and create affordable housing, I get that. It, but it's not that they're buying it to live in, it's, 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 it's different. And in, in some situations, go ahead, Jim, here.
I was just gonna say the facility that they have, you know, and being zoning as, as a B two the way it is right now, there's a business that could go in there. That, that's, that there's no question that would maintain everything the same way with what's going on and not have it as an R two. Believe it as a B two, and if somebody wants to put in a. Whatever type of a shop, it's there and available.
And, and.
So we're not asking that to have the house taken down, that's not what we're saying.
So I, I'd like to, Phil, could you comment on, when you put this future land use together? And the rationale for B two along Minnesota Avenue, like, we're talking about all the way up to Fifth Street. Past Sixth Street up to Fifth Street, can you explain some of the business rationale for why you selected that?
Right, well, uh, you, you're always looking to create a pattern of land use that's just gonna support, uh, reasonable uses. And so here, Minnesota Avenue is of course the, the main, uh, uh, the main street into the, into the mill of, of old, uh, Orinoco. From the Highway fifty-two interchange. It also, those properties, uh, enjoy visibility, uh, to Highway fifty-two, so they would be, uh. Very, very attractive to business. And we know, of course, that, uh, there hasn't been a huge amount of activity, uh, in Orinoco, everybody's waiting for the sewage. And that really is a driver of development, so I think we can expect to see things, uh, heat up dramatically here in, in the next couple of years. But on the question, I, I think, um, uh, Councilwoman makes very good point about looking at the whole comprehensive plan and not just the map. Uh, that those, those goals and those policies, I think are pertinent, even though they were developed twenty years ago, they still apply today. They just don't apply only to this parcel and this parcel is in a situation that it hasn't been used for a house. It has been zoned B two, uh, they don't have a grandfathered right to use it, they did start building it without permits, doesn't have a, a septic system. There are many other properties in the city that would fit that goal of preserving housing and providing housing. Uh, and so, uh, uh, to, to, to pin that on this one property. Uh, I, I think, uh, I guess goes against what, uh, what, uh, Councilor Richards was talking about. The, the city did discuss at some length, where do we wanna go, what is our vision, what are our goals? And yes, we want to, uh, encourage, uh, keeping existing housing and we want to encourage future, uh, development. And so this pattern that, that, uh, has those properties either side of, of Minnesota Avenue guided for a commercial was part of that. Uh, and those, those other goals still apply, but they apply to the whole community in trying to provide, uh, that house.
Could you give me a few examples of other places that you think could be used as, um, duplexes that are current existing homes in our community? And that would be available right now to provide that?
No, I mean, I don't have an inventory of, of properties, but, uh, you know, um, any, any home in the community, if it were zoned properly. Could be, uh, potentially divided.
We don't have any, I don't think anything really zoned R two at the moment, that is.
Some.
Well, I guess over on the other side, there's a couple.
This R two over here on the west side, there's some right now. Outside of. The residence, just the north of them, this is an older map, of course. But these are still R twos over here.
Yeah, and of course, what you're pointing out, the zoning map, uh, we should, uh, take that in conjunction with the land use plan map, which is. What's in, intended as the future land use pattern. And over time, or maybe, you know, quickly, the zoning map should match that land use plan map. Uh, so that the zoning is in place, uh, that, that, uh, follows the land use plan map. So there, the orange on that map is, is the R two, so anyplace there, uh, and, uh, you know, if there's existing homes there, they could be, uh, uh, converted. Um, or there could be other places in the community where you fine tune this and you say. Where is that dividing line and might be moved it a little bit one way or another to, to allow other properties to be rezoned. But this one, as pointed out again in, uh, my report, the graphics that show the existing zoning. Uh, the proposed zoning, the land use plan and what it would be, really does create a, uh, you can respond, so on a very small. Uh, piece of this R two in the midst of what's intended for a B two commercial.
You made a comment, your opening comments about, if it didn't. Maybe you can clarify, if it didn't, if we didn't, if we denied the rezoning, the house would go back to what, B two?
B two, well, it doesn't go back to it.
It's still in.
It is, yeah.
It's currently zoned B two, um, and, uh, so that, that simply wouldn't.
The house could become a business.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's not like it has.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I mean, it could be a beauty salon, it could be anything.
But does any, I mean, we know there, people need homes and I don't know necessarily if throwing a business in a home.
It's not in a home, it's a structure.
It's a house.
A structure that hasn't been lived in since nineteen seventy-one.
If anybody drove past it, would they be like, that's a beauty salon, no.
I mean, what's the difference of a business being in a barn then? You could say, same thing, you know, you have to look at it as a structure and I'd, I'd make one comment into something that you mentioned, Dana. Is, you know, that the council does the detail. I, I would argue that it's the opposite, P and Z, they're into the real nitty gritty details. And we bring that back to the council based on codes and ordinances. And we bring that back to the council based on codes and ordinances and and you know, everything that that planning and zoning knows and 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 what's what's happening, we go by these maps as well. So I mean, I don't wanna discount that planning zoning doesn't get into the detail, cause that's what we're all about.
I didn't say you did. I think that is what your job is, is to provide the facts, think of the details, but I dig deeper. And it is an individual and. I definitely have my, um, I do my due diligence and I do my research and I talk and I visit and I.
As we do.
And so, and so when I, and Phil, I don't know if you know the people who authored this or if you were one of the authors of this.
And I've I've read that, just so you know. And so I I see the way you're talking about, but I don't think this one facility is gonna make a difference on on housing if there is an Orinoco. I I have to disagree with you, I think, in planning it and and having things in the future that we're gonna be doing. We looked at small houses. And that was a part of planning and zoning that was going on for a while. So there's been a lot of things that have been done looking at some of those issues, not this one in particular.
I agree with that, but I think that this is a existing structure. And I think you're just, you're you're all kind of thinking of this as, I don't know, I I think it's I think it's a, it's a hu- giant waste of resources to, and I think it's a giant waste. Uh it it's just not a way, it's not how I want to lead our community as far as telling people, we aren't going to give you affordable homes. And we aren't um going to work, we're not gonna, we're gonna just. I don't, I think that we're here to think outside the box and I think that that's something we can do. Um, I am here to think outside the box. And so that's what I'm doing and I'm providing that. I'm providing that. Um, but I think you all know how I feel about it and we can move on.
And Counselor Burgner, if I could add, I mean, cause affordable housing is very um dear to my heart. And I understand aging housing stock. But I I'm also going to push back a little bit again on the on the planning and zoning commission's role, because they really dig into all the pieces. They've been, and I I can't speak to, you know, what happened before I got there. I know that they've done the best they could and but I I know that also, since I've been here, I've provided them with all sorts of historical data, including that comprehensive plan, because that is a a living document that should be, one, the planning commissioners should be familiar with and then also reviewing, like you say, to to uh to make adjustments if and when necessary. But there has been an incredible amount of work that and resources that have gone into developing all of those land use maps and the zoning maps and the code book and all the ordinances. I think we need to be really careful about um just trying to meet the needs of one specific property. And because that is the entrance to the city, we need to be very clear about how we want to guide that entrance and what we want there. And going back to my first statement, I care about affordable housing. But I also um don't, I just don't see that that particular parcel is a, or any of those ultimately between the Hawks' property and probably the bridge itself. Is is necessarily the appropriate place to look at placing affordable housing. I I think those properties are best served, highest and best use in real estate terminology by looking at your zoning and the business and commercial um zoning pieces that you want to go there. And I I respectfully um also echo the this sentiment that by by not approving or in in fact denying the rezoning does not take away from the Hawkins' ability to lease those properties out in line with code and in the following proper procedure and and processes within the city as determined by city code and the building code as well.
Thank you, Sandy. I also like to make a comment, you know, we, and I'm sure Stan Tech Planning and Phil and his associates, they did look at the vision and that's why they came up with the future land and that's why P and Z approved it. So if you look at the case of, let's say we approve the rezoning and we have a R two house. Next door, there's two other homes, three homes, and over a period of time, those owners, you say, I'm gonna sell the house. And somebody comes in, I'm gonna put a business in here. By the zoning, they can do that. They can take this, all three houses out of there and put in zoning and then we're left with, well, do we, do we wanna follow our our zoning vision and have an have an R two house sitting in the middle of it? So that's where, yeah, I think it's gonna be just as difficult further down the road. If we follow the vision of B two along Minnesota Avenue and then we have a B two housing in the middle of everything. Uh, cause anybody that comes in and buys any of those properties, they will have to follow the zoning that's in there right now unless there's some really strange case of not wanting to.
So all those homes are going to have to become businesses. You can't.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying if they were to sell them.
If they were to sell them, they have to become.
They wanna sell them and somebody comes in and says, I wanna buy that land and I wanna put a restaurant there. They've got total capability.
Can they continue living there? As long as somebody takes ownership in one year. What about a biz, a house that a person passed away? And they live out of state or and they can't take ownership and live there in a year?
Uh, state law, which is mirrored in uh Orinoco code, says if a use is abandoned for uh more than a year, then the use has to be conforming to the to the zone.
And and that's, that's like anything that you buy, if it doesn't conform with with current code, you have to bring it up to current code to do anything with it.
And in twenty years, since this has been developed, what 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 is your, what what generally? Now, the person I talked to today said this clearly should be updated. It's old.
That's her.
This person had a very contentious time with the the council at that mom, at the time. The the council didn't help, but basically, there was a committee, but council really wasn't involved with making this. I don't know if you guys know that, but that's what it was. And so the, I think, um the people that were on the council have passed away since then, but um. In what, in your opinion, when do people, is twenty years, twenty years a long time? Is this a a good time to think about? Updating?
I I think anytime of when you see changes in the community uh is a good time. Uh, some communities look at their plan every twenty, thirty, forty years. Twenty years is not unusual for communities I've worked with across the region. Uh, but uh.
At the time, it sounded like they didn't get a ton of, um, like if you read in here, there was only like seventeen people that came, you know, seventeen citizens that came to give their input. I feel like now we get a lot more and we have might have a different.
Right, I mean, there is, if you read through it, it's all centered around the sewer system.
Absolutely, that's that's the whole thing.
And that's what I mean is that, do you think that, I'm just thinking. Is this, is this, is this thing that we're putting so much faith in? Is it, it it's, it's. It's not, it's, but it's, it's twenty years old. How many things do you have that you?
Holds your house.
I mean, we did one in two thousand sixteen, another one that was done, it was two thousand six, two thousand sixteen. So if you take a look at that, then you take a look at what was put into effect in two thousand and nineteen. There's a lot of of good information that's been developed throughout everything that's that's in there. So if you put all three of them together, you'll find a pretty good plan. Planning and zoning took a look and said, okay, we wanna, you know, come up with some other ideas on on how to look at uh zoning and what we're looking at lot sizing and everything else that way. And and Stan Tech gave us a rough overview that there was, that was presented to us about, what, six months ago? You know, and and it's, it's a matter of, is planning and zoning looking all the time on trying to come up with something that might be more forward looking? Um, the answer is yes, but um I don't think historically we've turned around and had a three year or five year plan in the city. Uh, businesses do three years and five year plans. Um, these are all the things and and the committee that's going on with planning and zoning is is pretty forward looking on what we're trying to do and do things by code, by law, you know, and so are we looking at all those different variables? The answer is yes. You know, are we looking what's going on with with the county as well and and in Homestead County? I attend the meetings if there are and and I know the mayor has been to some of them too. That you look at on 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 how we're gonna do housing and what's going on. So I think those are issues that we have, but.
Cause yeah, I I look at it. Would would you want a big business to to come in your neighborhood? Would it be right to change that zoning? Because somebody decided once over in your neighborhood when water and sewer are in and and I don't know if you guys, if in River Park, if they still need the the seepage area. But if someone said, hey, I wanna come in and put a warehouse there.
Do you really think that's the same thing? That's an interesting comparison, Jim, because we're talking about an existing.
It's spot zoning, Dana. I I guess I'm trying to get.
It's creating a place for somebody to live. Versus, which is already a home, which in in right behind them has been a home, you know, there is another home. And there's a home next door and the next door, you know what I mean?
Other direction too, Dana, cause you're only looking one direction. Go back the other direction. There's an automotive place that there is. There's a current business on that property right now.
Anything.
I'm just saying, that's existing right now. Those things are existing right now.
So why don't we use them as they are meant to be used?
It, that's what a B two is and that's the way it's owned right now.
I mean, you can look at it and you can, and I mean, uh and you can, like I said, if you, if there's never gonna be, if there's never gonna be any um nuance in anything that we do here, I think that's a mistake.
I think you're gonna find a lot of nuance taking place in in Orinoco.
I I I think that we should, because this community is super, super um unique. And I think we should, but I think in this situation, we're not. And I think that that's um a mistake. And that's, that's all I have to say.
I mean, I, you could have several arguments. I mean, if I wanted to put apartment building over in in a.
I'm not talking about putting anything new up.
If I wanted to do that, would you think that we should let that nuance go? And and I I'm just.
And it's, it's really, it's an existing building.
It's spot zoning, no matter how you look at it, it's spot zoning.
I mean, you can keep saying, and it doesn't make it true.
But it's.
It is true.
It is.
It is true though.
I mean, if I could just throw in too, that that from my perspective and and granted, you know, my tenure in Orinoco is is shorter than the rest of you, but I would, I would venture to guess that you've had too much nuance within the city and um I can't tell you how pleased I am to have a fully functioning, membered up planning and zoning commission that is really committed to to looking toward the future, because we know it's coming. Um, and and again, I I understand the affordable housing um argument, but I I just don't see it benefiting the city in the long term. As Mayor Ryland has pointed out, I'm more concerned about the precedent that you could possibly be setting today for one property that it could come back and create more problems in the next five to ten years as as the city looks at restructuring and um really setting standards and abiding by the standards that we set co- collectively together. Um, and I'm, and I'm finance person, always thinking in terms of revenue as well. So I'm, you know, looking to to the uh tax potential from a commercial perspective, rather than than what could possibly be gained by coming with a duplex.
Um, not really. I was just gonna, all I was gonna say is, I agree with Dana a little bit that, you know, just because the planning and zoning does the deep dive into this stuff, that's not to say that the council isn't supposed to also pay attention to these issues. But they're, you know, those are not mutually exclusive, like, you know, in some councils, you just get rubber stamping and whatever they do, whatever they recommend. And that's really not, I mean, there's a purpose of having the final vote be before the council and said the council actually looks at the issues and, you know.
I know Planning and Zoning has spent a lot of time looking into this with the support of city staff and and at the same time, I appreciate all the council members that look into it as well. So to me, that that lends credence to, um, and we have different point of views, but at the same time, um we're all independent, but at the same time, we have to think what's best for the city and our residents going future too, so. So with that, um, I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven B. Resolution of the City of Orinoco, Minnesota, denying the request for a land use planned amendment and rezoning at seven ten Minnesota Avenue South, Orinoco, Minnesota. Give me a second.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Mayor Ryland, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Ryland.
Nay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm I'm I'm, I'm I'm sorry, May. I meant to say I approve the denial. I can retake back my vote if not, it's not legally.
So, so your motion to adopt a resolution of denial, it seems counterintuitive, but you vote in favor of the denial?
Yes.
Place Mayor Phillips.
Uh, gay.
Counselor Burgner.
Nay.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
And Counselor Carl Abson, thank you. So then that sets aside twenty-seven A in its entirety. Thank you.
No, just a confirmation that that was a tie vote on that twenty-seven B, so we, it doesn't go anywhere.
No, it wasn't a tie vote.
It was three to one.
Three to one.
Well, I misunderstood.
You said A, so it sounded like.
I said yes.
Apologize for hearing.
So with that.
Twenty-seven eight or twenty-seven doesn't, well.
So looking at.
Uh, you have another set of mo- of resolutions on the question of the lot split and areas for the lot size. Um, I would recommend that you table those. Um, because splitting that off and uh allowing that lot now may be a moot point and uh we might even uh request that the the applicants withdraw those, but we could have time to uh see what. We could have time to uh see what might uh work itself out uh in that regard, but. You could able uh consideration of those other uh motives and we will make sure that. Uh, uh, we don't uh. Get out ahead of the sixty day rule here and and. Inform them of an extension. Time to consider what might happen.
So if you do that, you should direct staff to send a sixty day extension letter. So the sixty days expires on November seventh, right? In November, yeah, so you 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 could have another sixty days till January to vote on it. So if they don't withdraw, you'll have to bring it back. For a vote to act on it one way or another.
On. The reservation.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, and then and then if you did that, what we would do. We would take out the approval one because you really can't approve it. I mean.
No, it was a dozen fish zoning.
It would be twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight.
Okay, so we um. So your comments, is that enough instruction for the city staff to proceed with the letter?
Yeah, and you can do that. I mean, if you wanted to go forward with it, you could go forward with it, but. Yeah, so that's, those are kind of your options, I guess. I think it'd be, you know, if they withdraw it, then you wouldn't have that, use that resolution number and you wouldn't. Kind of muddy it up, but it's gotta be done in writing, so that's why I suggested that they. Table it till the next month and then just send the extension letter and deal with it at that point.
So you need a motion back, so.
Um, yeah, you could do a motion to postpone.
Action on.
Uh, action on resolution twenty-eight until postpone till the November council.
Make a motion every table. Uh, resolution twenty-two, twenty dash twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Until the November fifteenth. Uh, city council meeting.
Second.
Jim? You have a comment? Seeing that and all those. Favor sign of saying aye.
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 Same sign. Post. That's approved. I think that concludes everything on planning and zoning. That I was parks and trails. Okay. Parks and trails, we have some quotes for picnic tables and trash cans.
We're talking about the doghouse, is that what you were talking about? Um, I don't think that there was really a motion or anything put on with the doghouse. Uh, the the pet facility that there was for the the barn or whatever we want, what's the name of that?
You know.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we discussed it at planning and zoning and went through it and everybody, it's not on our itinerary, so. It wasn't nothing was formal, but but it was all positive, so.
It's not on the agenda because the applicants, well. We have no applicants, applications in the that have been filed for consideration. We just got um the with Phil there. Um, we were able to get some really good direction to give to the applicants and we'll follow up with them. So that will be in the future.
Tables, garbage cans. Uh, current garbage cans are in need of replacement right now. There's fourteen of those that are in the park systems. Uh, I did quote an additional six um maintenance free picnic tables. Pricing is very close, better editor, I think it's all. The same product for the most part, uh maybe a little different differently made manufacturer, manufacturer, but. Uh essentially the same product. Pricing is very close, very similar. The only thing I would recommend here is the the pilot rock. Well, just because of the size of the uh garbage receptacles. Fifty-five gallons versus the the U line bulk of thirty-two gallon, a little bit larger, uh hold more garbage.
Yeah, I agree.
I like that they're gonna be less easily destroyed.
Yes, yeah, these things are, they're they're built very well.
Yeah.
Do you anchor them as well?
We can uh, we can also cable them. Uh, to certain landmarks, rocks.
And a cable makes more sense and.
The tables are definitely uh. Less maintenance, you know, you don't have to paint them, you don't have to stain them, they don't fade, they don't rust, they're uh. They're very high quality cables and receptacles.
Kane, what do we have? The green ones we have now, the square ones, what's random though?
Where?
The green, like Alice Park.
Oh.
We have a few of them kind of everywhere.
Yep, they're scattered throughout, and I think the conservation corps kind of spearheaded some of those.
Uh.
When they did some of the uh flood restoration garden park, uh and then of course from Alice Park was. Revamped, uh, we added a few there as well. Same style though, maintenance free.
Well, right, and they're green, so I guess that's kind of why I was thinking, why not stick with the green and I don't know.
Yep, and that's and that's exactly what I've got here is green.
The pilot rock one.
The green, yep, and we can, we can go for other colors. I was thinking green is just kind of a.
Yeah, just uniform.
Easy blend in, not like a bright yellow sticking out, you know.
Yeah, and it would be nice just to get a uniform look.
And and you know, that's one thing that I've been talking with Sonny about is creating a standard.
Mm-hmm.
So moving forward, uh, say somebody wants to donate money to a bench or a picnic table or. Maybe a garbage can, you know, here's the standard, we're not gonna accept homemade ones, we're not gonna accept. You know, Menards brand, this is the standard, this is what we want, this is why we want it.
Were all the tables um green or they have a black frame underneath them?
They are uh galvanized, hot dip galvanized.
It's it's actually better.
Better than the black.
Yeah, better for longevity, hot dip galvanized.
It differs a little bit from what we have, the color black bottoms versus galvanized.
Correct, like but like you see the permanent ones, I call them permanent picnic tables in Alice Park and River Park. They're mounted on concrete, you can't move them, they're there.
They're hot dip.
They're there, you know, where a picnic table we can utilize for Gold Rush or Lions Club or. As needed, you know, those permanent ones are great, I love them, we don't kind of weed whip around them. They don't hardly get vandalized, I mean, those things are built to a stand, but they're permanent, you can't move them, so.
So one point about the receptacles. Do they have a big opening or a round opening?
Uh, like a hinge about the size of a shoebox.
So it is square.
Uh, yep, but it's a domed lid, what's like a.
Right here.
Yeah, it should be.
Oh, yes, okay, that's.
So this will help keep the garbage dry, uh. You know, that's that's always a a tricky situation when they get full rain, so. Like I said, we're in need of the fourteen receptacles right now for the twenty, for the end of this season and moving forward. And then I quoted six other tables. Now in the future, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to say maybe do ten next year, ten the following year. And maybe we'll come to a number, right now we've got thirty tables, thirty picnic tables that we can move, right? Maybe that number is high, maybe it's low, and maybe we'll get to a better number. Maybe we don't need thirty tables. Maybe we've got enough of these permanently mounted ones, now we can kind of back down that number.
I I definitely like the approach of standardization because any new development comes in. Here's what our standard is and.
Yep.
We've got, we don't have to guess and think about it.
We do have uh some pilot rocks equipment, they're they're in the state parks, they're in the county parks. There are some of our city parks, very good product. Uh, I'm not saying anything bad about Uline either, uh, good quality products and. Similar uh design and manufacturing, so. Uh, as you can see, the prices are very similar.
I know it's not in your quote, but at some time. Or maybe it could be included about any handicap tables.
So yes, we, that's an option with with either company, uh. The handicap picnic tables, uh, the.
Extend down.
The add ex tend though.
Yeah, and so you'd have like a ten foot top versus an eight foot top, or you'd have a six foot bench with an eight foot top, right? So you can have access.
Yeah, we should have one in each park for sure, that would be a goal.
Yep, and that's like with the permanent ones in Alice Park and River and Carroll County is uh. We can remove one of those seats, one of the benches or two, and then you have. Uh.
Yeah.
Accessibility. And those work good because they are on concrete, they're on flat ground, you know, so that's a benefit there too. Uh, one thing with the fifty-five gallon receptacles is we will use existing uh. Trash cans that we have from from Gold Rush that will be the liners, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
You know, so we're gonna save some money there, uh. It's like a hundred bucks for one of those liners, so I figure we can, uh, we've got some from leftover from Gold Rush and. Ones we can. Fill these new receptacles.
Is is this in this year's budget or is this for next year? Is it, we have budget for this this year?
Yep, it is, it is in this year's budget.
Okay, which is great, I just wish you.
Yep, so there's twenty thousand in the uh general equipment, uh parks and rec. And I quoted up to fifteen thousand, I wanted some leeway there, whether it's other park amenities. Something else comes up between now and the end of the year, just give us a little bit of buffer there.
I think that's great.
I'll make a motion to approve up to fifteen thousand dollars for the pilot rock tables and trash receptacles.
Yeah, is that gonna give us enough? It's fourteen nine 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 one.
Well, is that what you?
I I would think that maybe a little bit more of a cushion that, you know, in case it.
You know, it says their term is thirty days, so I. I imagine they're gonna honor that.
Okay, I was just, it was.
Yeah, now it's set to the little closer comfort.
Any other comments? They've done all of the favor of the purchase from. Sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign.
Thank you.
Right, and while you're up there.
If I could just find out who seconded Dana's motion.
Jim Phillips or Richards?
Thank you.
Let's see, we have a quote, harvest.
Yep, Yulski, two quotes in front of you, uh, there is money left in this year's tree budget, uh. The last time to trigger trees is is uh. Uh, later in the year, now until freeze up and beyond, so uh. Orinoco Park and River Park have been two parks largely wooded forested areas that could use some some pruning. Just to extend their lives. As you can see, they're very detailed, John Marks and myself went through the parks and. Looked at each tree and looked at what the needs of the park were, uh. We're gonna, we're gonna uh file the brush on site and burn the brush this winter, that's gonna save on some of the costs. Instead of having that hauled out and.
Um, in the um. Orinoco Park, I think that's pretty straightforward. In the River Park. It says raise ten oak trees.
So raise that, raise that means uh, so if you're walking through the park trees, you're not ducking, right?
Uh, okay.
We're gonna raise up those lower limbs.
Okay, I was thinking they were coming down and I was like weird.
Okay, we're we're trying to prolong these trees, they they need some good uh good trimming techniques and. And like you said, this is the time of year to do it.
Did you along the trail, have you been marking? And what is going, what it, what is that all?
So along the River Park Trail from uh Woodlands.
Cedar Woodlands to River Park.
Cedar Woodlands to River Park, yeah, we are going to uh clear back a little ways. Cause right now there's some of that stuff is growing into the trail, so instead of dodging those trees and. Uh, we're gonna get that cleared back a little bit, uh, and then there are some trees that will get removed that are. You know, if this tree fell, it's gonna fall on the trail, so we're gonna try to remove those hazards and and uh.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then we can, then we can mow a little bit further on each side of the trail, that way in the summertime. You know, the the noxious weeds aren't coming out towards the trail. It's uh, there's a lot of buckthorn in there, there's a lot of box elder trees.
We need goats in there.
Goat should be great.
We'll discuss that in parks like.
Okay, so there's there's two separate ones that you have for that.
Yep, yep, so each each park we identified uh. A six thousand dollar cap. For each park, um. Orinoco Park, more with Orinoco Park, uh rainbow tree, uh the Twin Cities, they've been doing a lot of uh. Treatment of the oak trees down there. So this is kind of in conjunction with that, we're gonna raise and trim some of the dead wood off those oaks. Uh, just prolonging it more, getting that dead weight off and making them healthier so they can withstand some of the winds. Withstand the heavy snows. Just trying to prolong the tree's life.
Make a motion, we approve both harvest quotes for River Park and Orinoco Park.
Second.
Up to twelve thousand dollars total. Any other comments? They'll start their work this November, December, January?
Yeah, we're thinking November into December, it'll be done this year and then uh, there there is money left in this. In this year's tree budget, so.
All the favors, second five is saying aye.
Aye.
I, both same sign. It's approved. Uh, the next item is regarding.
Mister Mayor, if I could just add one question for Kane, does any of this come out of that state grant?
Not not this stuff, Sonny, this is all separate from the uh Emerald Ash or EAB.
Okay.
That the DNR uh. Well, that's the next item on on the agenda.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yep, separate, okay, thank you, Sonny.
All right, um, next item is a resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Adopt resolution to acknowledge and approve grant contract agreement with the state of Minnesota. And Kane, you want to speak to this?
Try it. Uh, so uh Parks Committee Lance Sorenson started this uh Emerald Ash for. Grant application, started it, got it going, it got legs. Uh, he then turned it over to me. That's where we are on it. We've done some work with the Emerald Ash Board, we removed seven or nine large trees. Uh, we had the stumps grown, uh, and we will be replacing those trees with new trees. That are not ash trees. And so that's to come, there are funds available. And you will see it in your in your packet.
Nine thousand four hundred fifty-six. So this, back in, if you look at page six of the agreement. There's one Dana signed it once and we need to have uh Sonny sign it, so we before it's official, we need this resolution to adopt. This agreement. A grant agreement. Is there a timeframe on using the funds or is that written in the?
I think it's in there, I think it's uh late twenty twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it's item A on the resolution. The grant runs from April fifteenth of this year through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Unless we unless we finish up earlier, but that's drop dead date.
So just to clarify, point number C, the total cost project is fifteen thousand four forty-six. With no matching grant, however, the grantee is opted to provide a match. With no matching grant, however, the grantee is opted to provide a match. Of um five thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. That would come out of the balance of the trees whenever we get the grant. Could be next year or this year. What is the awarding date?
I believe it was already awarded.
I'm a little confused by it because on one place it says the effective date is April fifteenth. However, um, I think I saw somewhere else where it, it only becomes. Uh, active on full execution. That's why I had asked. Kane, if he had received a fully executed copy, because the city, although the, it, the funds have been encumbered by the state. Um, no one has signed off on it as the um state agency. So I, we need to follow up on that piece. But because um this required city funds, I wanted to make sure that it was brought to council. Um, for approval because I only became aware of it. By virtue of uh attending the Parks and Rec meeting.
Let's see the payment number four point two on page two of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, June fifteen. Twenty twenty-three.
Right, there are requirements of the city, so we need to make sure that um those are adhered to as well.
I was gonna ask that when I, when I was reading through it, who, who is going to make those? Who's going to be in charge of that, I guess? You know, advertising and. Not one of the requirements.
I think Kane and I will coordinate that together.
That sounds good, Sonny.
I didn't know if the, you know, I didn't know if the committee had to do anything or.
So in the back of the packet, we have a budget comparison sheets on page four or six. At the bottom of the page, Department forty-three zero zero four tree removal. Tree removal, we had twenty thousand in the budget. And year to date is about nine hundred ninety-three dollars.
Really?
Seems like we spent more than that.
Seems like we take no more trees than that.
Actual calendar year to date. We still have seventeen thousand dollars left, if I see it right. It's gonna be pretty close with the Arborist bills and this. It's gonna be right at seventeen thousand. But it's gonna be close.
But does this come out of? These expenses, the fifty-seven hundred that we're matching, right? That's what we're matching. Is that this year?
I don't think so. I think that can be uh. Later, that could be anytime we see.
Between now and twenty twenty.
Right.
I, I believe that's how I understand it, Sonny.
So then.
All right, Sonny?
I agree. It's over the term of the, the contract.
So then we take that into account during next year's budget and the year after.
The other um thing I would remind you is in. The twenty twenty-two budget comparison, remember Ornacal State is separated out. From the other parks and recs, so. That's why we're gonna combine them next year and then we'll always be able to have a, a, you know, readily available without having to do the math.
Well, this isn't even, this is actually a line item itself, true, Department four three zero zero four tree removal.
Oh, right.
And that's where the two Arborist quotes.
Right.
You just approved will come out of that seventeen thousand and change number.
Right, but then the other grant we could use from the parks.
Correct.
We could take that out of the parks budget. That'll all be combined. That will make sense.
Yes, I agree.
I make a motion that we adopt. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, acknowledge and approve brand contract agreement with the state of Minnesota. Richard seconds.
Mayor Island. Sorry.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Bergner.
Hi.
Counselor Richards.
Hi.
Thank you.
One item that was added. Um, it should be a. A letter.
We have Gold Rush coming next for that.
I had an item. That was.
Could be at the end of the.
From the age friendly committee, the city of Ornacal. Uh, this is a formality, but we're two points working with. Dan Conray at the Olmsted County. Or something like this. Everybody see it? So, it's a letter that. We send to the state of State Director, AARP in Minnesota. Uh, requesting membership. Of the AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities, and this is in partnership and with support from the Olmsted County Age Friendly Group, so. Again, leading up to this discussion, Dan thought it would better for support from the Olmsted County to be part of that initiative as well. You know, currently we're doing a survey. Hope everybody's had the chance to submit their response to the survey. But uh, this is all kind of leading us into a plan of. Working with Olmsted County and our own individual plan, but support from Olmsted County. Survey is one aspect of it. I do have some additional pages that I received just recently that I'll make copies and. Share with you or have staff, staff scan this and send it to you, but there's some other information about. The age friendly and what Olmsted County's looking at. They're looking at the next three years of putting together a plan. And we'll be putting our plan together as well for. Think we've chosen um. With the survey results, which are due November the. Fourth, I think it is. We identify specific projects, develop a work plan, and then share that information with the Ornacal community, so. This will be a multi-year project, but hopefully we'll get some good responses back from the survey that will help us identify. How to better age in place with transportation or accessibility uh to our city hall. There's a whole host of, there's a lot of items in that survey that we're looking for direction from those responses and how best we're gonna serve our community. Uh, we have. Survey results coming back here to City Hall, Grace Lutheran Church, the Presbyterian Church. The VFW as well as a United Methodist in Douglas. Uh, we have a meeting coming up this Thursday. Hopefully we'll get an idea of how many surveys online have been done. So far I've collected eleven surveys from here. So we'll tally all those up on November the fourth going forward, so. So I appreciate the council's approval of this letter. Supporting it as well, so. I make a motion that we approve the age friendly membership letter to the State Director. Of AARP Minnesota.
Wait a second.
Any other comments? Dana and I are on this age friendly committee and uh. If you're interested to see the survey responses and support. Any other comments? All those in favor, sign if I was saying aye. That's approved. Gold Rush, the minutes in the packet with resolution. Twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two dash thirty, returning the three thousand dollar donation. It was designated for their fireworks this year and was not used, then it goes back to the Gold Rush. Board.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty.
Second.
Any other comments? Again, it falls into the auditors. That's the way to handle our finances, and so we've documented this, so.
Yeah, roll call on that one.
Yes, Mayor Ikorst.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Bergner.
Hi.
Counselor Richards.
Hi.
Thank you.
Update on personnel? Jim or Sonny?
Go ahead, Sonny.
Um, we had, um, you'll recall, we had posted for the special project assistant and I got two responses. What I'd like the council to consider is allowing me to repost that and then also post. For the administrative assistant, that third person. Um, that used to be uh. Part-time on staff, but I'd also like to make sure that they get posted into the Rochester's paper. Post Bulletin, I think it is. So broadening the pool.
Where, oh, before you only did the news record?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a small pool.
Whatever you post in the post bulletin. Keep it short and succinct as possible. Yes, I'm just more expensive than Zabroda.
Sonny, do we do anything on LinkedIn or do we do anything like online? Do we submit anything on that either too?
I have not.
I think that that's probably going to get better results than either newspaper.
Hey.
Could we?
In the past, indeed gave us a lot of responses.
Right.
A lot of responses, but it did open it up to a much larger, because we've never. Maybe Renee can comment. I don't think we've ever gotten a response off the post bulletin for.
I, I don't.
Probably works people or.
I don't think people. I, I think most people, I shouldn't say most, but I think a lot of people probably are. Searching online instead of actual newspapers for jobs these days.
Well, I definitely, like I say, my intent is to broaden the, the outreach so that we can get a better pool. Not that there's anything wrong with the two applicants already. I was glad to get two, but I just. I like a bigger pool, cause I, I'm looking at the one, um, the special project assistant. Really needs to be somebody that's gonna be committed to seeing that project through. It's a big one. Um, and it's gonna take time and um, and the administrative assistant one is certainly one that. That I want to retain long-term for the city. Turnover costs money, so.
I, I agree. I think we should use all three of those. Options for. For the job search.
So is administrative assistant meant to be a part-time like the previous one?
Yes.
Same hours, no benefits?
In terms of hours, I guess, um, Renee and I are still working on um segregating duties. To assign to that person. I do wanna make sure that they have a little bit of accounting background so that they. Uh, can assist with some of that stuff. There's certainly some stuff administratively that I think. Kane could use assistance with. I know utility bills, those may have some, you know, some. Facets to be considered, and, and again, when you talk about the audit, you know, I'm really looking at in terms of. Segregation of duties, so developing those job descriptions. Um, for Renee and for um. The administrative assistant, those are in, in play as are, and I have Kane working on. Job descriptions for positions within his department as well. So those are things we're all working on. So I don't know if, if there's really. That I need a motion for you to do that, if you just trust me to uh expand that and. And uh, develop the job descriptions and, and I'll bring it back to you with candidates.
Sonny, do you wanna give an update? Um, we know, we know Jim has left. Do you want to give an update on, on replacement? And, and where we are in the process?
Well, I, I can tell you that Jim has left, um. And we, he had a significant amount of uh PTO payout and comp time. Um, so that was. I, I, the number is escaping me right now, but it, I, it was between five and seven thousand dollars that was paid out. Um, maybe the gross was seven and he got five, something like that, but um. Kane is working on the job description for um. For his replacement, and then in the interim, I've authorized him to use um. Our seasonal John Kingsley. At, you know, three to five, we're still work. He's off, I've authorized him through October and then. For November and December, we're really looking at the numbers to see how many days and hours we can, we could do that. We wanna post for the position November first or early November. So that we have time to receive the applications, score the applications, interview. And then um bring recommended candidates to council for consideration. Uh, for a start date of January one. It's a tight schedule, but I think it's doable, although there are holidays in there.
Yes, I appreciate your initiative to get that. Process going because we're relying on Kane and. And Corey to do the weekend work and that third person is really a nice to have on place, especially. Hopefully it's somebody that has a water license that can step right in and do that work.
Right, and I'm glad you mentioned Corey because today marks Corey's six-month. Um, anniversary with the city, so. Um, unless council wants to extend um his probation period, he, that wouldn't be lifted.
Well, that can be on the member agenda then.
Sure.
As far as if we do a. A raise or end of six months or just a official.
Why is that our, isn't that sunny?
Corey's.
I know, but isn't that now with the city administrator, isn't that more sunny and Kane's? Doug, doesn't need to come to council? Am I wrong about that? I thought we were doing away with like.
Sonny.
Yeah, we have agreed, we have agreed that um the Personnel Committee. Will continue through, at least through the end of the year, to make sure that we're caught up on these um. Performance reviews for all staff um prior to the January one. Um, effective date of any increases that will be approved in the final budget.
So then do we have, so then what, what do we have? We don't do anything, you guys to work. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
That's the way I understood it.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
And thank you for that vote of confidence in us.
Right.
Uh, we have one last item, a quote for replacing some equipment that um is gone awry. We've lost our amplifier. We're amplifying the sound in the back of the room. And um. I guess we did get a web, we're still waiting for the.
It's, they bypassed the web presenter, so we're not recording off of that, but they didn't worry about we get. Obviously, the cameras.
There's also a quote for uh dropdown mics, which would help with the reverberation between the two rooms. We make a motion that we approve the quote from Sound and Media for. It's here someplace.
You know. One question I have is, do we wanna look into having some type of a mic by the podium?
Well, we've got that mic.
Oh, we do have it.
You have a microphone stand.
To me, it's hard to hear if they're not talking on the mic. My old ears.
Sometimes I don't want a mic up there though. We, we control the mic.
So where's the nine thousand dollar figure at?
I only see six hundred.
It's on the back page or the second page here. Up toward the top, cost summary in terms, nine thousand eight sixty nine, price good for thirty days. It's the right above the signature page.
Yeah, I don't think I have that, and I was wondering that.
On page two?
Oh, it's, it's a double-sided.
Oh.
Oh.
Are we looking at for money? Because all, the only figure I see is six hundred.
Nine thousand eight hundred and sixty nine dollars.
That's a lot different.
Yeah, well, and the six hundred dollars is a credit for the return of the processor that they have out there.
And, and is this, am I wrong in saying, did I read that this is like a this is a no longer being made?
Web presenter is no longer being, the company is out of it.
Right.
So it would be a different piece to replace that.
Can I ask why we need it if what we have now is working and we're recording on Zoom?
I guess I'd have to ask. I don't know.
So the council township uses Teams, not Zoom.
It doesn't matter because then that would still record.
So in the internet, I guess.
I'm just wondering what are, are, what that brings up if everything's working now and that.
Good question. Did you follow up with Eric?
Well, and I, I know we always like to get more than one bit when we can, but it was difficult enough to, although I must say that we were under pressure too to get this stuff working in advance of the big meetings that we had coming up and definitely for the November meeting with, with Joe's PowerPoint.
We're also looking for an amplifier too.
Yes, well, yeah. Amp was taken out.
Our webmaster and microphones.
Right, so I guess.
This, this digital signal, signal processor.
We can table it.
Well, but yeah. I think it would be a real, do you think all this stuff would be in by the November first meeting, like the microphones and stuff? Probably not.
Any idea?
You said amps are running six to nine months out.
Oh. So another month.
Possibly. He did, he didn't know.
Year. All right, let's.
We can negotiate perhaps a little bit with them too. Uh, we've got until, this is dated ten seven, so if it's good for thirty days, we, we've got a little time to, to work with that too. And still utilize what we've got in order to facilitate that November meeting.
Right.
Two weeks from tonight.
So is there a motion to table that?
I'll make a motion to table this to get.
Or get more information.
To get more information of Renee.
For a second.
Second.
Yeah, definitely find out that what the signal processor adds to it. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Discussion of city commissions and committees, can we? I don't know what that's about. Could that be tabled?
Yep, given the hour, I would say both of those two items can be tabled till November.
And then we have our real briefly outstanding citizen nomination. Uh, every year we have our outstanding citizen nominations. Where they're open now, it's on the website and Facebook by February, by November tenth. The Outstanding Citizens Committee will bring the recommendations of A, B, and C to the council in November, make a decision based on that information, and that will be awarded at the December council meeting, usually right after the public forum.
Do you want to, can we make sure that we get that out into the world?
West side, please, if somebody wants to pick up on.
Yeah. Well, today you did. Okay, that was, okay, thank you.
Consent agenda. We have two construction pay request number ten. Me comment to Joe.
What they care less.
I make a motion we approve the stuff, construction pay request for one point, one day and eight hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and thirty five cents. Second.
You could do these all by one vote if you want. That's the beauty of, of the. Yeah. The one, although one thing I would note is that four A is missing from your packets because I wasn't able to pull that together for you. So you'd just be approving the consent agenda as whole, absent four A. And is that your motion, my mayor?
Uh, yes, and Jim Phillips seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda with the exception of four A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ooh. Name's nine, that's approved at uh, eight forty eight. And we had one other special announcement. Happy birthday, Joe.
It's his wife's birthday, but and their anniversary.
Now we got married on her birthday. That's a great move.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mike, too.